Our Father.
Lord of them.
Help me in thy name.
Our King, who come, thou wilt be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And we shall not practice as we do in the past against this. And we shall not attempt to change what the world has seen. For thou is the King of power and the Lord of all. Amen.
Please mind staying for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Keep calm, bro. Please, Ms. Wilson.
Bill Fox. Kevin Barnett.
Here.
Blake Bowlen.
Here.
Lucas Carter.
Here.
Alan Farmer.
Here.
Bo Green.
Here.
Doug Hughes.
Here.
Gary Mills.
Here.
Suzie Carter.
Motion to enter reports and the previously distributed.
Over.
Need discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, opposition, motion passed. Motion to enter list of city bills paid and they were previously distributed. They're the ones you have. I mean, I mean, committee.
So move.
Yeah, first, second, need discussion. Hearing none, I'll take a roll call, please, Ms. Wilson.
Kevin Barnett.
Aye.
Blake Bowlen.
Aye.
Lucas Carter.
Aye.
Alan Farmer.
Aye.
Bo Green.
Aye.
Doug Hughes.
Aye.
Gary Mills.
Aye.
Approval amendments, regular meeting held Tuesday, January 20, 2015, and they were previously distributed.
Make a move.
I got two, one question.
Okay.
Under our committees.
Yes.
We only, according to the minutes, we only had four committees with chair. I think we're missing three committees on that.
Yeah, you have sewer on there.
They didn't have sewer, financial, personal, or what we voted for chair, for chair.
Okay, did they change in three?
Yes.
Okay, I'll have that correct. Did they have ten?
Just with those correct.
Okay, any others? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Next is consideration of ordinance regulating yard sales on commercial property in the city of Middlesbrough, Kentucky. Second reading.
So move.
Chair.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll have a roll call after the reading. Go ahead, please, Ms. Wilson.
Ordinance regulating yard sales on commercial property in the city of Middlesbrough, Kentucky. Whereas there exists a practice of establishing temporary sales of new and or used items on commercial properties throughout the city. And whereas the city of Middlesbrough Council deems it that these sales create an atmosphere contradictory to the desired appearance of a successful, dignified business and district. And whereas the Middlesbrough City Council finds that problems such as traffic, parking, congestion, and difficulty accessing other local businesses and services are also related to these activities. Now therefore be ordained by the city of Middlesbrough, Kentucky as follows. Section one, a new chapter of City of Middlesbrough Code of Ordinance. General regulations is created as follows. Chapter ninety-nine, yard sales. Section ninety-nine point zero one. Definitions, ninety-nine point zero two, yard sales on commercial property prohibited. Ninety-nine point zero three, yard sales on public property permit. Ninety-nine point zero four, yard sales on residential property. Ninety-nine point zero five, signs. Ninety-nine point zero six, highways, streets, and right of ways. Ninety-nine point nine nine, penalty. Ninety-nine point zero one, definitions. The following words and phrases are defined for their application in this chapter only. The meaning described to them are used each time they appear unless the context clearly indicates other meaning. A, yard sale. The outdoor display and sale of tangible personal property, either new or used, at a temporary established point of sale such as a garage, yard, carport, parking lot, or tent. These sales are also commonly referred to as garage sales, rummage sales, flea markets, attic sales, and other similar descriptive terms. B, commercial property. A privately owned location, including buildings, parking lots, and adjacent landscape areas where businesses, commercial, or professional service activities occur. Includes vacant business locations and empty lots along the city's business corridor or downtown area. C, public property. Property owned by a government entity, school, or other publicly funded organization. Includes buildings, parking lots, and adjacent landscape areas. An example of this type of property would be the city downtown parking lot. D, nonprofit organizations. Any organization having nonprofit or charitable status as defined by the Federal Internal Revenue Service. Examples include but are not limited to churches, schools, or groups within school, civic organizations, health research foundations or associations, and organizations supporting public or community improvement endeavors. Ninety-nine point zero two, yard sales on commercial property prohibited exception. A, no yard sale shall be conducted on any commercial property within the city by a private party or group. This applies to both occupied and vacant properties. Nothing in this section shall be construed to prevent a licensed business from offering outdoor displays of the goods or services for which the business is licensed at the business location specified on the license. B, a nonprofit organization may conduct a yard sale of commercial property with the consent of the property or business owner. The provisions of ninety-nine point zero three apply to these sales, including the permit requirement. Ninety-nine point three, yard sales on public property prohibited. A, yard sales are permitted on public property as defined in ninety-nine point zero one within the city under the following conditions. One, the sale must be conducted by a nonprofit organization as defined in this chapter. Two, all proceeds from the sale shall go to the organization to further its cost, program, or operational cost. None of the sales proceeding shall go to an individual except to cover expenses conducting the sale. B, nonprofit organization intending to conduct such a sale must first obtain a permit from the city clerk. One, the city clerk shall design and implement a permit form. There shall be no fee for the permit. Two, the permit shall be obtained prior to the event and specify the organization conducting the sale, the location and duration of the sale, a contact person for the property to be used. Three, if the public property can be used to city property, the clerk shall verify that the location is available before issuance of the permit and notify the applicant within two business days. Four, once issued, a copy of the permit shall be transmitted to the police department prior to the event. C, nothing in this section is intended to regulate yard sales held by a nonprofit organization on its own property, except the provisions of ninety-nine point zero five, signs, shall apply to all sales within the city. Ninety-nine point zero four, yard sales on residential property. The city does not regulate yard sales on residential property. However, the provisions of ninety-nine point zero five shall apply to all sales within the city, including those on residential property. Nothing in this section shall prevent law enforcement from addressing safety issues regarding property and traffic at residential yard sale. Ninety-nine point zero five, signs. A, no sign advertising a yard sale shall be displayed more than two days prior to a sale. The person or organization exercising ownership or at least hold rights over the property on which the yard sale is advertised to be held shall be presumed to have placed the sign advertising the sale that identifies the address or location. The organized, organization identified as holding the sale on public property shall likewise be presumed responsible for the placement of signs advertising the sale. The presumption may be rebutted by evidence of the contract. B, yard sale signs may be posted on private property with the express permission of the property owner. Signs may be posted on city property, except that they shall not be mounted or attached to any utility pole, street sign, traffic sign, or other device, public device, or structure unless the structure's specific purpose is to display advertising or announcements. At any location, the sign must be secured, secured and safe and grounded. C, all signs related to yard sales must be removed, including all stakes, staples, or other mounting devices, within twenty-four hours of the conclusion of the sale. The same presumptions regarding responsibility listed in paragraph eight apply to removal. Ninety-nine point zero six, highway, streets, and right of ways. No goods, produce, or other items, either secondhand or new, shall be offered to sale on the right of way, shoulder, or sidewalk of any public highway, street, or thoroughfare. This section shall not apply to a licensed business offering its own products for sale in front of a licensed business location. Ninety-nine point nine nine, penalty. Acts contrary to the provisions of this chapter shall be deemed a violation, and any person, organization, or corporation so committed shall be fined less, not less than fifty dollars or more than one hundred dollars in addition to any court costs. Each day the violation is committed or permitted to continue shall constitute a serious offense and shall be punishable as such. Section two, this ordinance shall take effect after expiration on location according to Kentucky law statutes.
Need discuss, uh, need a motion?
So move.
You've got a motion, second, need discussion. Wouldn't there a roll call on that, please, Ms. Wilson?
Kevin Barnett.
Aye.
Blake Bowlen.
Aye.
Lucas Carter.
Aye.
Alan Farmer.
Aye.
Bo Green.
Aye.
Doug Hughes.
Aye.
Gary Mills.
Aye.
Next is consideration ordinance, meaning code of ordinances of the city of Middlesbrough, Kentucky relating flood damage prevention. First read, and they were previously distributed. Maybe not, it's just a small part. Okay, here. Will we do need a motion, second to read?
I have a motion, say.
Need discussion. Go ahead.
I got one question.
Yes, sir.
Do we have the flood map at the committee meetings?
Well, not flood map, I could have a set, but there's so much, there's eight of them to make one map, and they only gave us three seconds. So, the theme I can, we can't get more, it just cost us the period. Yes, we'll have this set. And I will say, overall, there was more added to the five-hundred-year plan than, than to the hundred. The five-hundred doesn't have to have insurance or anything. And that's the thing, they took some out of the hundred and moved into the five-hundred, which is a good thing. More than they did in the others. These were the ones in two thousand five expanded, these actually made it a smaller area.
So you're saying that the hundred-year area is less.
Yes, sir.
Than it was.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Go ahead and read, please. Oh, I'm sorry, wait a minute. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, go ahead.
An ordinance meaning the code of ordinances of the city of Middlesbrough, Kentucky relating to flood damage prevention. Whereas it becomes necessary from time to time to amend the Middlesbrough, Kentucky Code of Ordenses as needed when circumstances change. Now therefore be ordained by the Middlesbrough City Council that the Middlesbrough Code of Ordinance shall be amended as follows. Chapter one fifty-six, flood damage prevention. General provisions, section one fifty-six, point one C. Basis for establishing the areas of special flood hazard. The areas of special flood hazard identified by the Federal Emergency Management Agency in the flood insurance study for Bell County dated March sixteenth, two thousand fifteen, with the accompanying flood insurance rate maps, other supporting data, and any subsequent amendments thereto are hereby adopted by reference and declared to be a part of these regulations by city and for those land areas acquired by the city through annexation. This FIS in attended mapping is the minimum area of applicability of the ordinance and may be subject by studies for other areas which allow implementation of the ordinance and which are recommended to the city council by the floodplain administrator and are enacted by city council pursuant to statutes governing land use management regulations. The FIS and/or firm or permanent records of the city are on file and available for review by the public during business hours at floodplain administrator's office at City Hall. This ordinance shall become effective immediately and on passage and publication as required by law.
Need a motion.
So move.
And a second, need discussion. Need a roll call to begin the first read, please.
Kevin Barnett.
Aye.
Blake Bowlen.
Aye.
Lucas Carter.
Aye.
Alan Farmer.
Aye.
Bo Green.
Aye.
Doug Hughes.
Aye.
Gary Mills.
Aye.
Next is approval of twenty-fourteen add the layer of tax refunds. Ten short dodge, fifty dollars overpayment, regular American title escrow account, ten dollars and eighty-two cents.
Big move.
That was overpaid. Got a motion in a sec. Need discussion. Need a roll call, please.
Kevin Barnett.
Aye.
Blake Bowlen.
Aye.
Lucas Carter.
Aye.
Alan Farmer.
Aye.
Bo Green.
Aye.
Doug Hughes.
Aye.
Gary Mills.
Aye.
Now comes the best. Have a group of young people here that wants to make a presentation to the council and all, and we'd like to invite them up. This is a presentation, and I put, obviously, team of Middlesbrough Elementary School, and I've learned in the last couple of years it's changed. Destination imagination, is that correct? So I put it in wrong, and that's my fault, but we'll correct it tonight, I'm sorry. But if we want to come up and just introduce yourself, and then let's start a presentation, if you would, please. If we need a little more, we can cheat up, just a little, if you need just a little more, you got it? Okay. How would we like to start this? I know today we started just to have a little conversation, however you want to go.
Just wanted to introduce yourself as a group?
If you, if you would, please.
We are the Destination Imagination Team from Middlesbrough Elementary. Destination Imagination is a nonprofit organization whose purpose is to inspire and equip students to become the next generation of innovators, and we compete in a regional competition and a world competition. Our challenge was to choose a community service project to improve our community. We chose smoking because it is a big problem in our community. Thirty-three percent of Bell County's population are smokers. Nine percent of Bell County's newborns have a low birth weight. Secondhand smoke is a known, but preventable, second cause of low birth weight, which contributes of infant mortality. Secondhand smoke can cause harm in many ways. Each year in the United States alone, it's responsible for between one hundred and fifty thousand and three hundred thousand lower respiratory tract infections in children under eighteen months old. Secondhand smoke makes children much more likely to be put in intensive care. They have to, they have the flu, they stay in the hospital longer, and they, they're likely need breathing tubes than kids who are exposed. Asthma tags are perhaps the most well-known health effect of secondhand smoke exposure among children. We are, we are proposing a non-smoke ordinance in all public places in our community of Middlesbrough, Kentucky. We have four hundred and eight signatures on that petition in support of our ordinance. Please help us make our country a better place by supporting our ordinance.
Thank you, thank you on that. If we could, thank you. One thing I want everyone to understand, they have a couple of things I'd like to ask the council to at least enter into the record so we can look. They have brought us, they have done so much, that they brought us an ordinance from other cities that they've gone online, they've been looking at, drafting, and brought it to us for something to look at, which is a lot of work, and we greatly appreciate this. Here's their list of four hundred and some names. I haven't gone through them all, so I'm not going to tell you I have yet, but here's your list of four hundred and some names. I'd like to ask for a motion to intervote these into.
Second.
Got a first and second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, we'll enter these in, and the way this works, as we talked today a little bit, we will have to take this to our city attorney. I don't know if any of you know her or not, but she, I actually seen her standing in the back, she was trying to be a little white today. But it's Miss Yayo, and we'll take it to her. I told you, I told you, Dave, I thought you heard more than you did when you said you had an attorney. But anyway, yes, sir, but anyway, we'll enter this, have everybody look at it, and then it'll give us a chance in a committee meeting to come together and discuss part of it. As we go on, we'd like to invite you back again and help work with us on what we think one way or the other, we could or could not do with this, okay? Is there anything else you'd like to add? Without, I think everybody.
Great job.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Thank you. As a lot of you heard, the state has said for years and years and years, they were going to do this, this group here in just a few weeks, and they actually put together and moved forward some with it, and probably farther ahead than the state is, and we appreciate it, thank you.
Mayor, can we also put Destination Imagination in it rather than what we have?
Yeah, I had to tell Sandy so I could remember that. It had been honesty till a few years back, and I didn't realize it changed, and I do apologize.
Thank you.
Mayor, would you mind if we took a picture of them with the city council?
No, I think it'd be great. You want to do it now?
If you don't mind, would that be okay?
Yeah, we might still report. Then we can go report.
Yeah, it's the council's bedtime.
If Gary and Doug, I might have to sit at home and pray a little bit. Back there, we think there's that too. Stay down, it's not, Luke, it's fine. Yeah, we're not that tall. We're fine, stay there, please. And Frank, would you care to get the copy of this where we can give to them, and then they can go from there? Thank you.
Sir, very good picture of you guys after they get finished. Wait just a minute. Just a minute. Does everybody get around a picture, we'll send them up too.
Come on, good job.
Sorry, I'm a marketer.
I understand, I understand. Plus a parent, I'll take it.
Scoot over a little bit so we can get the big sounders. There you go.
Do you want all us to move out of the way real quick? Here we go. Thank you. Okay, we can go to committee reports. I need to keep everybody, we need to keep it to our reports on there, because we are a special call meeting here tonight to keep you talking to the reports and stuff on there. Uh, community development, Mr. Bowlen.
Yes. Good afternoon, it's good to have all of you here tonight, and it's good to have the students. The Community Development Committee, along with the other council committees, met for the first time in two thousand fifteen on Tuesday, February the tenth, to discuss initial agenda items for the upcoming year. As for community development, the primary agenda item and initiative discussed was the need for better housing code enforcement in Middlesbrough. It was identified as problematic and discussed that Middlesbrough has a high number of seriously dilapidated and almost entirely unkempt housing structures, most of which are currently held out to the community as rental properties. Ensuring that these properties come into compliance with city ordinances and any other properties of similar hazard and disrepair is an area where city government can and will approve in the coming year for the residents of Middlesbrough. After discussion, we feel we finally have the pieces and the people in place to make the progress you the residents have requested. It was recognized and discussed at the committee meeting that to begin making progress in the area of enforcement, the city must first take the initial steps to build the proper framework. To that end, two immediate action steps were recognized. First, the city ordinances provide for the creation and maintenance of an independent five-member board entitled the Board of Housing Appeals. The board is charged with hearing housing complaints brought before it by city code enforcement. It was recognized that we currently have four active members on the board and need to appoint a fifth. It was identified as a goal to hopefully appoint the fifth before our next council meeting in March. The second action step was recognized that in order to grow and become more proactive in the area of code enforcement, we need to ensure that our code enforcement employees have received the proper training and certification necessary to evaluate hazardous properties and issue complaints if found it. To this end, code enforcement was scheduled to attend some conferences in early February. I don't know if the weather got in the way, but we'll all do our part to make sure that code enforcement has those opportunities to get the training. They need to effectively execute the obligations of their job. In closing, I would just like to assure the residents of Middlesbrough and those of you in attendance tonight that we have heard you. This is an issue that we've all agreed, that we've all been pulled aside and asked about. And I want to reassure you that we feel like we're in a position now and have the people in place to take the steps and make the progress you've asked for. We ask for patience while we take this, time upfront to put the framework together so that we can help clean the community together. So, that's all I have, thank you.
And the training was called off for snow and rescheduled. We have one this month and next month, so.
Great.
It's moving forward, so.
And just real quickly, some, just a couple of issues that we'll talk about next time committee meeting, sorry, community development means is potential parking ordinance on Cumberland Avenue. We'll continue to work on website development with whoever is on the website committee. And if there's no, you know, objection, maybe I can take the smoking, the smoking ordinance under, for community development, if no one has a problem with that.
I can't see anywhere else to feed anybody.
I'm with you, I think that's a good idea. And the website is up. The front page is there. That's all I have.
Finale.
Yeah, that's one of the committees left off, that's my committee now, I'm the chair. We met on February tenth as well. We went through, we got an update on the audit, we're working on the two thousand twelve audit still. Jackie's be done by next month, which would have been, depending, by the end of March, monitoring. We also discussed the risk assessment form, and the committee suggested that we pass that out to random employees, and Jackie suggested do one, every tenth employee, and I printed that out for distribution, and there's instructions on the bottom, they can mail it back to Jackie to the audit.
And all she's going to do is pick out a random number, and then roll through every tenth person, so that way you got a random sample.
What it is, it just gives us a better chance to, for the employees, just to give us better feedback on what we're doing from a financial standpoint. We also talked about the next audit. After we get the two thousand twelve audit done, we should be able to do two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen audit pretty quickly, have the computers up to date. We also talked about we'll have to get another auditor, I believe.
Yeah, she won't be able to do it because she is now going to work with us as, as she's already calling.
Right, so we'll have to find a new auditor.
She's found a couple of good names. I don't know one, but she's found a couple.
So we're going to keep that on our to-do list. Next, we went over the monthly bills that we approved earlier, no questions, came up on those. We discussed the uniform financial information report that's due May the first, the mayor and Sandy will take care of that. We also talked about once the computer is fixed, we will get an operating statement on every three months. And then we started talking about budget planning for the next year, and then after that, it was also discussed that we have to review the garbage rates in the coming future, so. And with that, that's my report for the finance.
What were the other two meetings?
Sewer and street.
Sewer and street? Okay. Parks and recreation, if you got any.
No.
Okay. Personnel. That'd be you now, Mr. Carter.
Uh, we didn't meet, actually, I'm going to have my notes from the last committee meeting, my truck's been working on, I left that behind in my truck, but I'll present.
Is that on sewer?
The sewer, the thing we discussed, that was, you said the project was finished up at the, my. The sewer, the thing we discussed, that was, you said the project was finished up, that Michael said that they completed that, and that's the thing we discussed, sewer.
Okay.
We had safety too, but I don't think we had anything.
Yeah, but he wouldn't be safe, who's safe? Oh, that's Bill.
He wasn't here, he.
I don't think we had anything.
Oh, he wasn't here, okay. So, we'll move to street.
Okay, the only thing we discussed on the street that night was the, uh, companies coming in, people charging, they've charged people to trim the trees and then put the limbs out, and the street department's having to pick them up. Which the company's responsibility. If they charge you to trim the trees, whatever, third one, who is in charge of getting rid of limbs? Which is, got into a bit, I think the company ended up getting the business license and everything, and all that was straightened out. And then we discussed, coming up with something about putting street lamps in it. Instead of just voting to put one up, which is getting tossed by weed.
And that we'll have to look at in a policy-type matter and see how to come up with something on it.
Right, now, going to contact some other cities, dirtways and doing if they have a policy, have one. Who would recommend, who would have, what procedures they go through and everything. And that is all we discussed.
Can we, can we backtrack on first several things? I remember, I remember one thing we discussed.
Go ahead.
We talked about making the department heads come to meetings, we, we talked about that last year with you. And we want to make sure that they're still there in this upcoming year, that it's still part of the.
I think we, did we decide that we have to make the, make it part of an ordinance? That then is part of the job.
Job description.
Yes.
We also, we can go ahead and make a request, correct, Mayor?
Yeah.
Well, we've requested years.
Just, I guess, if you don't care, Mayor, if you would just, you know, kind of refer, I know everybody's been busy and things.
Yeah, this time of year, get the sortage.
So, if you would just remind them.
It's, it's hard to do our job when we have a question and the department head isn't here to answer it.
Especially, limited me.
Well, and I think one thing I might look at putting in place if we do that, we need to get our questions ahead of time, because I don't want the department head answering off a cuff. That's something where you don't always, that's happened so much through the times that you'll have a guy tell you and it not be completely accurate.
I'm not sure if that's possible, sometimes I'll come up that day.
I'm not talking just every little thing, Gary, but if you want a law or a rule or an ordinance, yell at them so they got a chance to look at it, that way they can give you accurate. Because I don't know how many times we've asked that question, and we get a conversation back. And when you go read it, it doesn't read that way.
But the department head's, the department head's guesses are better than ours are.
Sometimes, but that's not a good place.
No, I'm just saying that if we ask the questions, they will come back in a month.
Right.
You know, and we might need an.
Oh, no, I'm not saying that, if you get a hold of us ahead of time, where we can pass it to them, they could actually bring that information.
Right.
I mean, it'd make, it'd make for a better conversation.
I agree, but once in a while we're going to have a question that comes to us spontaneously as well as that.
So, with this being a special call meeting, we can't discuss other business, and we have, we have to wait for the next candidate to present that?
Yeah, because that's at far and open records.
Okay.
With that in your time, yes, sir.
This, uh, March tenth, six o'clock is the Personnel, Parks, and Recreation and the Finance Committee.
Next, next Tuesday.
Yeah, March.
Next Tuesday.
Personnel, Parks, and Finance.
And what was the last?
I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Uh, public?
We can't, you know, the special call.
Okay.
Nothing is not agenda driven.
Make motion.
Now the second. Have we got a second, have we got a second, all in favor?